Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of March 5th, 2025. At this time, I'm going to call upon everyone to stand so we can pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers, past and present. Thank you. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by Dartmouth Community Media and that the next regular scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals will be held here in this office in this room on Wednesday, March 19th. Moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, I'm going to take the matters out of order. I'm going to call the what's been listed as the second matter. It's special permit ZSP 25-1. The petitioner in this case is Jason Rocher, who's also the owner of the property. Subject property is known as Nine Autumn Court, also known as MAP 66 lot 20-34. Property is located in the single residence B zoning district and has been legally advertised on February 13th and February 10th of this year.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the business.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The petitioner in this case is seeking a special permit to build a 32 by 38 storage building on a lot located in the Aquifer Zone 3 district, increasing lot coverage from 17.8% to 20.6%, which does not comply with the town zoning bylaws under Article 28, Section 375-28.6A1 special permit uses. Moving on to the denial letter from the building inspector, which was addressed to Mr. Jason Rocher. "I have reviewed your application and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to noncompliance with current zoning regulations. Applicant proposing to build a 32 by 38 storage building on a lot located in the Aquifer Zone 3, increasing lot coverage from 17.8 to 20.6. A special permit is required per 375-28.6 to increase the lot coverage. Driveaway access to the property from Harvest Avenue is not allowed per the approved subdivision plan attached. Your application is being denied under the following sections of the Dartmouth zoning bylaw, Section 375-28.6 special permit uses, and it's the expansion or modification of a nonconforming use. The subject property is located in the single residence B, Aquifer Zone 3 district." The letter is dated December 30th of 2024. We do have other comments. We have a comment from the planning board. The letters from Mr. Dangiosa, the plan director, planning director. The letter is dated February 13, 2025, and it says, "Planning staff at the Plannings Board request as reviewed the special permit application of Jason Rocher, who is seeking a special permit to allow for the expansion or modification of a nonconforming use. The applicant would like to construct a 32 by 28 garage." Actually, it says, excuse me, 32 by 20 vehicle storage building with a proposed gravel driveway accessing Harvest Avenue. As noted by the zoning enforcement officer in his denial letter dated December 30, 2024, driveway access for this lot is not allowed per the approved subdivision plan entitled subdivision plan of Dartmouth Landing, approved by the Dartmouth Planning Board on May 7, 1990, and endorsed on August 13, 1990. Alternate access to Autumn Court would be required for the proposed project to be in compliance with the approved subdivision plans. A copy of the applicable subdivision plan has been uploaded to the portal under application ZSP 25-1. This letter is based on the information available in the files of writing of this report without benefit of any input from the public at the public hearing. If you have any questions or require further assistance, please do not hesitate to contact this office. Thank you for your opportunity to comment on this request. We have that. We also have DPW. Well, actually, we have Board of Health. Applicant will have to meet all setbacks and requirements per the Title V Endowment Supplemental Regulations to Title V for the onsite sewage disposal system from this proposed storage building. DPW says this site is within the town of Dartmouth Aquifer 3. Maximum lot covers is 10%. The submitted site plan does not show the roof area proposed to be recharged. And it goes on with the typical compliance and regulations rules of the DPW. So they don't have any roof area to be recharged. No plans for that. All right. I just picked up on that now. And that is about it at this point in time. So I am going to call upon the applicant or their representative to come forward and state their case.
Hi, how are you doing? How this whole project came to fruition was, I'm new to Dartmouth. I moved here in 2022. The property is the only one in the subdivision that I'm aware of that goes from Autumn Court to Harvest Ave. It's the only one in there. So the access on Harvest Ave, it's been there, not, I don't know if it's legit or if it's not, it's, there's access there now, getting into my property on the, on Harvest Ave side.
You just put, just for the record, because we have to actually translate this at some point, if you could identify yourself.
Jason Rocher, the owner of Nine Autumn Court.
Okay, thank you. Continue on.
So there is, there is already a gate in the back on Harvest Ave that allows me to get from my property to Harvest Ave to maintain the sidewalk grass area when it is time to cut the grass and whatnot. As far as the drawings that you guys may have seen in front of you, those are, those are all up to date, but there's a lot of stuff on there that is being removed because there's, there's a lot of stamped concrete on that property that was not put there by me, it was previous owner, that does not make any sense on how he has a sidewalk going into the middle of the backyard, and you can see that on the drawings. So there's about 1,700 square feet of stamped concrete that will be removed in the backyard, previous, regardless of this garage or not, of storage. But again, back to how this came to fruition was, in 2013, my dad and I were into cars. You know, we've always been into cars. Dad passed away, mom got stuck with the house, car stayed in the garage. I moved out to Dartmouth and the cars stayed in Far River, that's where I'm originally from. So two years ago, mom sold the house. Cars had to go somewhere, dad's cars. So now the cars are in storage. They're in Middletown, they're in storage. I have three or four of my own personal cars, and again, most of the cars are not even registered except two, which are the two that I have in my personal garage that is attached to the house. What I like to do is, again, it's not a means of egress every day, I'm not using that driveway. I wasn't proposing to put a driveway in. I was just going to drive from the garage to the Harvest Ave entrance if I decide to take the cars out. Most of the cars have not been registered in, I'd probably say about seven years. So, I mean, that's, that's how this came to fruition. The entire property is surrounded by 24-foot abrevites. The garage, proposed storage garage, is about 17 to 19 feet tall, but you won't even see it from Harvest Ave or Autumn Court. We got plenty of setbacks, 60 feet from the back, and I can move the garage wherever we feel like we need to be. We have designed a recharge center, a new septic reserve area. I mean, everything the town's asked me to do, I've gone back to my engineering and my architects, and you guys had that in front of you. I'm into this right now for over $8,000 for two pieces of paper. So if it does not get granted, then I think I'm at a point now where I have to stop. That would be a third of the cost of the storage building. Again, it's not for an auto body shop, I'm not turning wrenches, they're just car storage. Even for power at this point, it's, they're on tenders. I don't need a full-blown power plant to keep cars on the tender. The cars mean more to me than the garage itself, and if this doesn't go through, then I got to figure out what I'm going to do with these cars, whether I move out of Dartmouth and move back to Far River. But the cars mean more to me due to the fact of my father's value to them. I mean, there's, these cars are in hundreds of thousands of dollars, between six of them. So I think I've provided everything the town has asked. I know it's in the Aquifer area, but like I said, there is a lot of concrete, stamped concrete that the previous owner, I believe he was a stamped concrete contractor, he decided to put stamped concrete in a large portion of the backyard. A lot of it is going to be removed because it doesn't make sense. I mean, I don't understand how he has sidewalks going into the middle of the backyard in stamped concrete, and you can see that on the drawings. Farland Corp spent probably three days there spacking out the entire property. There's a lot of rock and ledge that's poking its ugly head out through the rocks, through the grass, probably about a foot. But again, the access out to, to Harvest Ave, there is a gate there, you might see the pictures, I don't know if you have them in front of you, of what it looks like from Harvest Ave and what it looks like from my backyard looking at the gate. I know we uploaded those on the portal. Again, I-
I'm going to ask you a question.
Yep.
The problem, I guess I got two issues. One is, there's an indication from DPW that there's no recharge system design that's been done from the roof of this garage, and we typically have that presented-
It should be on that drawing, that's on the, that's on the drawing.
It's the location of the system, there's no system, so this is for future design, probably.
Yeah, they, they quantified a certain area, looking at the garage to the left, there is a hashed out area identifying that on the drawings.
I just want to look at what they're, what they're saying on the DPW request.
Proposed location.
So you think that's sufficient?
I mean, we can put a condition that he has to go through DPW and get, like we've done that before, but I think before we go too far, if I may, Mr. Sh-
No, no, there's another issue, but that's okay. I'm sure you're going to touch upon it, I'll let you go.
No, because you kept, I mean, Mr. Rocher, you're saying that this 1,700 square feet of concrete that you're going to remove. If this is the case, if you remove, I just quickly looked, I'm not sure how big is the lot, is 45,000 if it's one-
Good take.
Yeah, so I mean, if you take 1,750, that's, that puts you below, you don't, you don't need the special permit from this board for the increase in the lot coverage.
Correct.
Right? So that's one. Second, what we have here tonight is the, the special permit for the increase of the lot coverage because you're in the Aquifer. I don't think we're, I'm not sure what the, with the curb cut, that's should be-
There is no curb cut, there is no curb on the property.
No, no, there is no curb cut, but I'm saying we're not acting on-
I have an issue on that, with that, I just-
So we can't act on it tonight, that's what I'm saying. There's no application in front of us for a curb cut application.
You can't get one, it's-
No, I know, he can, but he can, I mean, I don't know, if he can get variance, he can apply for a variance, I guess.
No, I think he's got to go before the planning board.
Not when there's a restriction on record at the registry.
Okay, so that's, that's another issue, then, that's when we have the lawyers.
I have a little bit of an issue with that, and that's the thing, is he's actually presenting us with a plan that has a proposed gravel driveway that's going to cross over what's been approved by the planning board that says no driveway access. I just don't know how, how I can, I can approve something like that when it's specifically something that's on record. So I, I don't know, are you aware of the fact that there's, obviously you must be at this point in time, that there's a no driveway access restriction onto Harvest Avenue?
Yeah, I just found that out, I just found that out when I actually went to the port hole, probably three to four weeks back, and just realized that after going through this whole entire process, realizing that there was, again, I don't understand the purpose of it. I mean, how else would I get on Harvest Ave to maintain the outside of my property if there's no gate there? I can't drive around the whole entire subdivision with a lawnmower if I had to maintain the property. And the fence that's there, the inlet that's there now is 16 feet in from the actual sidewalk or grass area. The inlet where the gate is, if you look at the pictures, that's 16 to 20 feet in from the street. So at the end of the day, it's not like I'm going to be parked in the street. There would not, there would not be any access of me impeding any traffic coming on to Harvest Ave either direction.
I'm just trying to see if I can find something on here, because technically, right now, you're telling me you have some sort of an access onto-
It's been there prior to me buying the house, I don't know who put it there. All I did was just repair the gate because my dogs, I didn't want the dogs to get out of the yard, so I just put two plastic gates up. But it's always been there. If you go back on, I mean, I found some pictures online from like 2008. That, that gate's been there since 2008, maybe even prior to that. And again, it's, I mean, I've, I've probably cleaned up, I don't know, I probably took about 100, 100 yards of junk out of that backyard when I bought it. I don't know the previous owner, I don't know what he did in there, but I've done a lot of cleanup in that backyard, so that access, we, I used it the whole entire time I've lived there, and I'm sure the other previous owners have used it. I didn't add a fence, I didn't add a gate, I didn't do any of that, it's just, and again, it's not my means of driveway because I have my common driveway on my other side of, on an Autumn Court for my daily cars. But again, access to this, I, I don't know why we need a gravel driveway. I mean, at the end of the day, I, I, once the cars go in there, they're going in there. You know, they're not even registered to be taking these cars out on a daily basis, you know? It's once they're in there, they're in there. So I don't know if that extra gravel put me over the max, which I think it did. And again, between not having to do the driveway gravel, once the cars get in there, they're in there. Again, it's not, it's not the reason why I'm building this, it's not something that I'm going to be doing, any automotive work, it's just more of a place to just to, right now, they're in Middletown, it costs me over $3,000 a month to keep these cars in storage.
I understand that, but that's not the test here.
No, I, I understand, I understand.
Mr. Rocher, the problem I'm having is that we have a plan that's been on, that's on record, all right? That's clearly been on record for some time, and this plan has a restriction on it that specifically says no driveway access.
When I came here the first time-
Hold on, and the planning board is telling us about this. And the building inspector also says on the plan, I mean, on his denial letter, that there's no access from that roadway. And you're asking us to approve a set of plans for a garage in which are, with a proposed gravel driveway specifically in contradiction to these limitations or this restriction.
When I came here the first time to fill out and get this ball rolling, the question was asked, I never even proposed a driveway. Forget the driveway even coming to fruition. At that point in time, Farland Corp, they have access to all this public information. They did not bring that up to my attention to say, hey, you can't, I would have stopped right there and then, I wouldn't have gone any further. You know what I mean? I wouldn't have wasted my time or anybody's efforts to get me to this point today. You know, because again, if, I think we just found that out maybe four to six weeks ago, worst-case scenario, a lot has happened, a lot has hap-
Let me stop you a second. The deed to your home, when you bought this property, refers to this. It's right in your deed that there's a restriction on record.
I didn't, I didn't go digging for my deed.
Did you have a lawyer represent you at your closing?
Again, I didn't, the intent of all of this wasn't for me to, this just came, sprung on me when my mom sold the house. I, all right, where were we going to put the cars? I'm like, ma, I don't have any place to put the cars, we got to find a place to put them. Okay? So how I got here was, let me get in front of the town, I got the land, let's see if I can put something in the backyard. At that point in time, when I called the engineering firm, they had access to a lot of this stuff. I'm, I'm assuming they did, you know, because they brought a lot of stuff to my attention, they're going to ask me for this, they're going to ask me for that. They're the ones that put all those percentages on that, on that plan.
You're talking about Farland Corporation, the people that did your-
Yes.
They neglected to put on there the restriction.
Again, that might be the case, but that's not, that's way above my expertise and all of that. Secondly, is that they did bring something to my attention, and that probably has nothing to do with it. One of, one of my neighbor's well is not where it's supposed to be. So on paper, it's, on my drawing, it's where it is, but on the town's property, our paperwork, it's not there. So I don't, I don't know how much, they found information for this. You know what I mean? So at the end of the day, if they would have saw that that driveway couldn't have been put in there, they could have brought it to my attention. So maybe they missed it, I don't know. But again, there is no curb cutting, there is no, I just don't understand the purpose of not having access from Harvest Ave.
I don't know either, but obviously, if you look at the minutes of the meeting that were had for this subdivision, there'll probably be some conversation in there as to why it is they did this.
I have no idea.
Because, because-
Now, let me ask you, are you able to reposition this or have a driveway go from Autumn Court on, to this garage? Why are you shaking your head?
I could, I just didn't go that route. I mean, I had the property in the back and, versus me trying to-
I understand what you're trying to do, it's just that-
I just don't know if I can get a driveway between my neighbor's property, and I don't know those requirements and what the setbacks is on me having a driveway down the side of my house. If you're looking at a Nine Autumn Court from the front, driveway's on the left, I could go around the backyard of my property. I mean, that's not, that's not far-fetched, it's just not what I was looking at because there was already access in the back. I mean, if I have to go that route, then that's the way I'm going to get back to my garage. I mean-
I think you might have to, and it's not like-
Well, let me, let me ask you this, does he even, does he even need to have a gravel driv, does he even need to have a driveway for the, put the structure up?
I didn't ask for the driveway. When I came to the town, the town said, we need to see a driveway, so I had to go back to Farland, have them charge me again to draw in two little lines with some gravel in it. But that right there put me over the percentage with the gravel driveway, so I was like, why am I going to put something I don't need?
If, if you're only using it periodically, like you said, you can drive over a lawn, it's not an issue. You can put the building and not put a proposed driveway on there.
That would be the intent. I mean, during construction, could I use that driveway during construction? Because I mean, how would I get equipment back there to do any of this site work or anything?
I'm not going to tell you, I can't advise you to do something that's in contr- The other thing too is you probably should hire a lawyer to see if you can do something about doing away with this restriction.
Again, again, I didn't want to throw a ton of money at something that if I got to this point and you guys said, hey, we're not going to go in there, I'm already into this for $8,000 for two pieces of paper. So at the end of the day-
All these things can be-
No, I, I totally get it, I just, I got to make that business decision on my side and say, do I keep throwing money at something that if I keep coming back, keep coming back, by the time I'm done, the garage would be paid off three times? And I'm still paying for cars to be stored in Middletown every month.
Right. What are your thoughts, you, Alvin?
My thoughts are the same as yours. When I saw the plan with the proposed gravel driveway, it says, we can't approve that.
If it doesn't have a driveway and he just has a structure and it doesn't have any proposed driveway, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, that's, that's, however he gets there, he gets there.
Yeah, but the plan has to be revised.
Right, yeah, which is the revised-
No, no, I, I'm just, I'm not saying tonight, obviously. It would have to be revised, obviously. And then he could, you know, if he has to drive over his land, he can drive, you know, from his driveway and go around and park his vehicles in there, whatever it is.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to doing that, it's just a matter of, again, to me, the easiest path was Harvest Ave, there's already a gate there, it's 12 feet wide, I would just drive in, park the cars, close the gate, and go back to my daily routine.
Mr. Schubert, any thoughts?
No, I agree, I mean, you know, the, the 2% increase with, with the, with the lot coverage is not an issue, you know, and we all agree on that, you know, the issue is the, the restriction on the lot.
So what if I remove that driveway from the drawings?
I mean, you got a second, Mr. Rocher, you, you have a minute?
Yeah.
Can you like, take a quick peek at this? Tell me if it works, I haven't been to your site, but can you use your driveway, can you access it this way?
Yes, 100%. The only issue would be the well, just the well's still down.
Yeah, but it doesn't, you know, I mean, no, by doing this, because you're using the existing driveway, so it might cut you down, and if you remove the 1750 that you're talking about, you might-
All of this concrete, all of this concrete, whereas the-
You may not need the special permit, so revise your plan.
You may not even need to come back before.
You may not need to come back.
That's why I'm here, I mean, it's a learning curve, it's definitely something that, again-
So if you could just-
Just didn't want to keep throwing money at something that was going to be a dead end.
If you can show the building inspector you're getting rid of a certain amount of square footage of existing-
Yeah, yeah, that's easy, that's the easy part.
And you're going to just put the garage and there's no driveway designation, I think that's something that would be workable. But before we get on that path, this is a public hearing, I do have to give everyone in the audience an opportunity to be heard. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this, to this petition? This is the petition for a garage on, or a storage, a storage building on Autumn Court. It doesn't appear to be anyone either, oh, I got someone who just raised their hand. If you could come, you're going to come up and kindly state your name?
I don't know what that was.
It's not yours.
Definitely not mine.
Hi, I'm David Vegas, I live on 20 Harvest Ave, which abuts the, the property.
20 Harvest Avenue, so are you the lot that's on the corner that's both on Autumn and?
I'm not, no, I'm the one behind it.
Excuse me?
I'm the house behind. So there is a, there is a-
Is it across the street?
Across the street.
It's, it's right behind his house, or behind that property.
Alongside of it?
He's on the east.
Alongside of it, okay. So on this plan, you're lot 133?
Can I see it?
Yes.
20-33.
Are you lot 133 on that plan?
Proceed.
Yes, you're lot 133. Okay, great.
One question I had, there was some percentages being thrown around, what is that 10% max referred to? Because it says he's, he's looking to go from 17.8 to 20.6, but then there was another point where it was stated that there's a 10% max lot coverage.
Well, it's a lot coverage that basically, the property itself is located in an Aquifer Zone. That's an offer, that's an area in which water is recharged into our town well system. So we, we provide heightened caution when it comes to any type of development within that region, because we all want clean water, we don't want to be in a situation where you can contaminate it. I don't know about your lot, but it's highly likely you may be over that 10% already. His property, he's at 17, given the building that he has-
Yep.
-in relation to the impervious surface on the property, he's at 17.8. The construction of the proposed garage or storage building that he's proposing would put it at 20 and change, 20 point, was it 20.4%? So he's asking for a normal increase in the amount of impervious surface on this lot.
Okay. Is that typical, that properties do usually go above that 10%?
We've granted some over 50%.
All right, that's one question.
It's a fair question, because it, you know, the numbers, we don't know what the numbers mean, but this is not a significant increase in relation to some other forms of relief that we've granted in the past. And if I'm speaking out of line, just-
You're correct, Mr. Chair.
Fine, I appreciate that, thank you. In regard to the Board of Health, what was their concern? Was it based on that? Is that there could be?
No, I think they had a concern about-
Setback structure from the-
No, it was something about the-
Leashen field.
Let's see what it says. The applicant will have to meet all setbacks and requirements per the Title V Endowment Supplemental Regulations to Title V for the onsite sewage disposal system from this proposed storage building. And I don't know if there's a sewage proposal, there's no, I don't think he's got any water or anything going to this at this point in time.
They meant the setback from the-
For the stormwater recharge? Is it stormwater recharge, is that what it is?
No, the, the-
Well, the subject system is already in existence.
But they want to make sure it meets the setback.
A reserve septic system in case my septic system fails, there's a move going on.
He'll be in compliance with that.
That's something that obviously they would review prior to the issues of the building permit.
You can't place the structure next to the system, that's what they're saying.
Okay. So hopefully that answered your question?
Yeah, and I, I think the only major concern that kept being brought up was the access point, where it was kind of in those original plans that there was a restriction on that. I know that there has been a fence, even, I've been there about eight years on that property, so I know that there was a gate there, like Mr. Rocher mentions, but I mean, anybody can create a gate on a fence to have access, whether or not they're doing landscaping or not, but not as far as a drivable kind of point of access.
Well, and, and that wouldn't be a concern for us, other than, other than the curb requirement of DPW, if it didn't have this restriction on the actual plan that was approved by the planning board for the subdivision. And it specifically says that his lot and the other one that's got frontage on both Autumn Court and Harvest Avenue, they both have that restriction along Harvest Avenue. And again, I don't know, and when I look at this, I can't come up with a reasoning for that.
Because it has two frontage on two streets, they don't want to give it curb cuts for traffic circulation.
Maybe that's what it is? I don't see it as a densely populated area, but--
You never rarely see subdivision with, with the--
Two, two means of access.
Yeah, with the lot facing to--
So I guess they don't want more than one, they don't want more than one curb cut on the same lot.
Okay.
That's what it is.
But that can be something that is, uh, worked on. Like, he could bring that forward and have that revised?
That's up to him. That's not in our purview, other than the fact that he's asking us, if you look at the plan, he's asking us to approve his, his new structure, storage structure, with a proposed gravel driveway that is in direct contravention to this restriction, and that we don't do. We don't grant relief to people when they're going to be in contravention to something that specifically, uh, is on record.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Now, that's not, I don't, myself, and I only speak for myself, I don't have a problem with this particular structure. I don't have a problem with that at all.
As far as being in a residential B area, even for the aesthetic part of it?
I've seen this, I've seen the building, the aesthetics of this building look really, really nice to me, um, and it's not to be used as a residential dwelling. It's not going to be inhabited for residential purposes. It's going to be used basically to store vehicles.
Okay.
And it's not oversized in relation to the property, not in my opinion, uh, and we've granted things similar to this.
I mean, the, the only reason he's here because the 2% over the lot coverage. If he met the lot coverage, he would go to the building department and get a building permit. Doesn't need to speak to anyone.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's by right, he can do, you can put a garage structure on it, as long as you meet the setback requirements. Now, if you don't meet the setback requirements, or you, you, you don't meet the, the lot coverage, that's why you come to the zoning board. Otherwise, he wouldn't be here. He don't, he doesn't need to be here if he met.
What is the, I, just for curiosity, what is the, the setback requirements off from that?
On this, it's 60 feet, which he has. He has 60.2, and from the side yards, he has 20.2, which is 20 yard side yard in residential B zoning district. So he's in compliance with all that. He's, he doesn't need that relief.
As far as it, um, abuts anything, uh, as far as it abuts my property or anything like that, is that, is there a relief there where--
20.2, that's where he's at.
That's part of these setbacks, yeah.
He's fine. He's actually twisted. It's only one corner actually is that close. Another portion of it is well beyond that, because he's sort of twisted a little bit. But I don't know if he's going to change. It, it changed his mind based on, you know, the fact that he's not going to be able to access, at least not have a, a plan that shows access from Harvest Avenue.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it. Appreciate it, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to, uh, this petition? All right, there not being anyone else. Mr. Rocha, can you come back up to the podium? So gentlemen, um, my concerns are the fact that I'm not willing to approve a plan that has the driveway, and I think Attorney Newman, you feel the same way?
Exactly.
Yes.
And Helene, you do as well? All right, but conceptually, the rest of it, we don't have an issue with.
No, no, I don't.
Okay. So, just a clarification. Um, we are not, I'm not willing to approve a plan, I don't think any of the members of the board are as well, pretty much they've shared their thoughts on this, with a designation of a gravel driveway with access from Harvest Avenue. The structure itself, I, I've seen the plans, I think aesthetically it looks nice, I think the placement of it puts yourself where you don't need any additional relief. Um, I would approve this short of the gravel driveway.
Okay.
Now, I would suggest that if you're willing to continue this, that we would give you another ti, another date in a month or so, so you can have your, your engineer reposition this on the plan--
Okay.
So that you can come back before us, and then we can, because when we make a decision, we make a decision based on plans that are submitted. And I don't feel comfortable doing it like this, because--
So just removing that driveway and showing it through the other access, or no driveway this way?
You don't even have to show me access, to be honest. I don't know how they feel about it. Are you--
Don't have to show me access.
No, and he, and he said that it's basically just going to be a place where he puts his vehicles and they're just going to sit there.
Yeah.
Fair, fair assessment?
100%.
All right. So I don't need you to show me access on the plan. Um, as long as it's not there, then I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that you can continue to do it, obviously, whatever you're doing, it seems to me that there's not supposed to be something there. Your neighbor is, you know, just supported your, your, your allegation, which you said, I didn't do it, and when I bought it, it was already, he said it was already there. But it doesn't mean that it was done correctly?
Correct. I understand that.
Okay. All right, so how much time you think you're going to need?
I'd probably need a week. I'd probably need a week.
And if you think for sure, you're 100% sure, you're, you're removing 1700, 1750--
It'll probably be more, it'll probably be more than that, actually, more than that.
If you do the, you know, you may not have to come back, so--
You may just be able to get a building permit once you've removed that.
And that's fine, I mean, I mean--
You remove the access gravel, you meet the--
You meet the requirements.
You're, you're fine with the requirements. So you just get a building permit. It's your issue. If you rip up your grass during construction, you fix it.
Yeah, 100%.
So that's another option as well.
Yeah, at this point, it's just a matter--
But I will continue it, and if you feel that you don't need it at that point. But you needed to do this plan in order to figure out--
The only thing that disappoints me at this point right now is I had no driveway on there. The town was the one that told me to put it on there. That's why I got disappointed, because I'm like, I came here with no, my original plan had no driveway. Because I said, I don't, I'm not dri, I don't care about driving back and forth. I just need to get them in the garage.
Maybe they wanted one that showed the existing conditions, but that's fine, but the proposed conditions, you can leave that to just to leave it to show the existing conditions, but the one that you're going to submit to us with the proposed conditions cannot have a driveway on there, access from Harvest Avenue.
Understood.
Okay?
Fair enough.
That's not, this, they've got these things on computers nowadays, they can put--
Yeah, I know, it's just a matter of me getting a phone call out in the morning and revising that.
My next date is what, March 29th or 27th?
The 19th.
Oh, the 19th, I'm sorry.
Uh, I can get it done quicker. I gotta keep going.
Well, I can't, we can't do it before then. So we could put you on from March 19th.
Sounds good to me.
Well, hold on, how many, how many cases we have on for the 19th?
Just one.
Just one, okay. So we could put you on from March 19th.
So revise the drawing, put it back in the portal, and then we'll go from there? Or no? Just bring them into the cell?
I don't know exactly how that works. I know how it gets to me, but I don't know exactly how it works.
I'll get it revised, get it stamped, and bring it back.
If you speak to this lady, she'll help you out.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Continue to--
Sure.
What date?
March 19th.
Uh, I make a motion that we continue the hearing for, uh, GSP 25 dash 1 to March 19th.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. She on the 19th. We may not see you as well, so if you do figure out with the building inspector that you're removing more than what you're putting back in, you're at the status quo or less, you're actually improving the situation, he could just give you a building permit and you don't have to come before. Just prepare a little letter asking it to be taken off the list.
Okay.
Okay?
Will do. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You have a nice night. All right, so, um, moving on to the next matter, next case, I have a conflict, so I'm going to have to step down. We're going to take a short recess so we can, uh, reconfigure the board.
Back in session, our next public hearing, last public hearing on the agenda is a special permit, GSP, GSP 24 dash 22, and this case was continued from, uh, February 26. Uh, just a quick, uh, reminder or a quick summary, this is the case on 263, uh, 261 Elm Street, and the applicant is, uh, here for a special permit to modify, enlarge, and existing dwelling, uh, from 1,000 square feet to 1,600 square feet. And, uh, we did, uh, the last couple hearings, I think we were concerned about the size of the addition and the, uh, the size of the dwelling on, on the lot. The lot has two structures on it, and, uh, but since that, I think there was a change with the state code regarding ADUs, and, uh, back, and back in February, I believe the state passed the, uh, ADU regulation governing the, uh, the additional accessory apartments on residential lots. Um, based on that, I think we had a, uh, a memo or an opinion from the building commissioner at the last meeting, uh, saying that this is the zoning bylaw for the ADU does not apply anymore. We have to go by the state, and this structure does not meet the state. So he thinks this is, we can treat this as an existing non-conforming structure, and we can look at chapter, MGL, chapter 40A, section 6 findings, and, uh, determine if this expansion is, is not more detrimental to the, uh, to the neighborhood or to the neighbors', uh, than the existing structure. Uh, and we can grant a special permit based on that. Uh, I did have a chance to talk to the building commissioner, just to make sure we're all on the same page here, and he did, uh, confirm that this is what he meant, and that's the route that we can take. Based on that, I'm not sure what you're feeling on this, but, uh, you know, it's a unique lot, unique situation here. We have two, uh, we have an existing dwelling that was constructed back in the early 1800s. It's been used as a dwelling or a residential unit for the past maybe, I don't know, 50 years, I'd say, probably at least, and--
It's not more.
More, and, uh, and it has separate utilities, separate address, and so, uh, something we can discuss. At the last meeting also, I asked the applicant to submit the, um, existing condition stamped by registered land surveyor, and, uh, I, they did upload the plan that shows the property survey stamped by, uh, registered land surveyor as we requested. Again, the addition is in compliance with the setbacks. They're not asking for relief on, on setback or height. Was the, uh, pleasure or, or discussion, you know, I mean, do we, I think they satisfied the, the requirement for the PLS by submitting the survey plan that is stamped by land surveyor. The second part is, uh, do you agree with the building commissioner on his finding? I-- I think it's reasonable.
I, I do as well.
I, it's, I struggled with it, but, and I had to think about it, but I think it's a unique situation here. It's not a brand new, uh, proposal that he's coming up to.
As I, as I understand it, we're talking about just adding 600 feet to, square feet to what's already there.
We can add 600 feet if you want, but no, 600 square feet.
Yeah, 300, uh, each floor. It's a two-story, yeah, it's a 600, so they go--
When, when this was first presented, my thought was, we're creating a monster by allowing someone to take a non-conforming, a pre-existing non-conforming and adding to it, and making it more non-conforming. But the more I look at this, and I, I've come to the conclusion that I, I think this, this would work, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, we tried to design it in a way that wouldn't stick out like a sore thumb and would play complement to the existing home and then the other homes surrounding it, so.
Mr. Chairman, that, uh, I told you I'm very familiar with the property. I know the neighbors, I've spoken to the neighbors. I actually rented this facility. It's a very unique, uh, type of housing, but it exists in the town of Dartmouth. There's quite a few around that area where you had two lots, whether they were built, the residential units were built for the, uh, for service people, maids or butlers or whatever they had years ago, that's probably what happened. And, uh, as I said, I'm very familiar with it. This doesn't deter from the area. It's not something, uh, there's plenty of land there. It's not like somebody's trying to put something in, you need a shoe horn to, to get it in there. The neighbors, uh, afar, it doesn't, it's not detrimental to the area, and, uh, I would say that, uh, it, it makes the property a lot better for everybody, you know, I mean--
Right, I mean, it makes sense that we're looking at this as section 6 findings. That makes sense now. My concern was the creating an ADU unit that almost twice what we allow.
Right, I understand, yeah.
Because, but now that the ADU bylaw is not enforceable or is not in, you know, in play, that's a different story, because we looked at this as a unique situation, you know, we're not creating a precedent. That's what my, my concern.
Right.
And I don't, you know, not--
We're not creating a precedent, but you know what, uh, as Alvin was talking about, uh, increasing a, a non-conforming use, that's why we exist as the Board of Appeals.
Right, no, I agree.
Because people come in every day, they got a non-conforming use that was there for, uh, usually lot lines, you know, and, uh, we didn't have zoning, we didn't have setbacks and all this. This is, uh, it, it is unique. Uh, the only thing unique about it is that there's two houses on one lot. The fact that it's non-conforming is not unique, because every, almost every, uh, plan that I've seen lately, uh, somebody built a garage too close to the property line and they got an arc--
This is when we're looking at the, it's an accessory dwelling unit on the structure, and this is where, because we had bylaws that says, we can allow you up to 800 square feet, and we felt he's already 25% over what we allowed, and then we turned it to be almost 200%.
Right.
That's, that's the--
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I don't think, I think the, the addition is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Uh--
Do you have proposed findings? Does any, did you, anybody--
Yeah, I, I think if we're ready. This is, uh, this is a public hearing. Again, I don't see anyone here that, uh, here for this case, so, uh, we can, uh, can keep the, the public hearing open, just in case we have any questions for the applicant. But I think we do have some findings here that we can look at, and again, you know, if you don't, we can go through them and see if there's anything that you agree with or you don't agree with, so. Findings, the, uh, the subject property is located at 263 and 261 Elm Street, Dartmouth, and is also known as MAP 117, what, um, MAP 117, Lot 182, on town of Dartmouth, assesses MAP, yes.
Isn't it just 261?
It's, no, it's 263 and 26, the property is 263 and 261. There's, there's two--
Addresses, there's two houses on the property.
We're only talking about 261.
Right, but-- The property itself has the two--
All right.
Two mailing addresses on one parcel. That's the problem, concern.
On here, it's, um, 263 Elm Street--
Unit 261, we can do that. Subject is located at 263 and 261 unit, uh, right? We can do that. Or we can just say that it's located at 263, either way.
Leave both.
Well, okay, we're just, you put the unit down, yeah. So the property measures approximately 21,500 square feet and has been owned by Robert, uh, Mahobald since April 2020. Just, I think it says 4 something, but just double check on that, please. And is located in the general residence district. Portion of the property is also in the 100-year FEMA flood plain. Currently, there are two residential dwellings on the property. The larger two, the larger two-story dwelling at 263, uh, Elm Street contains 20, approximately 2,750 square feet of living space. The smaller one and a half-story dwelling at 261 Elm Street contains approximately 1,000 square feet of living space and was built in the early 18th century, 1800th century, yeah. The structure at 261 Elm Street has been used as a rental property for a very long time. Uh, I don't want to put a specific, I don't know, a few, you know--
No, that's fine.
Yeah. Currently, there is a smaller, small kitchen, a small dining room, and a small sitting area on the first floor. The second floor has two small bedrooms and a small bathroom. The structure at 261 Elm Street is an existing non-conforming structure, as it does not conform to the current zoning bylaws. And basically, it's not, it's in, it's not conforming to the use, because the structure itself is conforming to, to the setback, to, to the dimensional setbacks and, you know, but, uh, the structure at 261 Elm Street has its own address, separate utilities from the main structure at 263 Elm Street. The petitioner is seeking a special permit pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter 40A, section 6, to expand upon the non-conformity. Agree on that? Even though they advertise under section 375, but we, I'm not going, that section 375, that section is not, uh, applicable anymore. That's what the building inspector's saying. So we're going after, you know, chapter 40A, section 6.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
The petitioner would like to modify and enlarge the structure by adding a two-story addition with 300 square feet of living space on each floor, with a total of 600 square feet. The modified structure would have a living room, a dining room, a sitting area, a kitchen, and a bathroom on the first floor. The second floor would have two bedrooms with a bathroom. The new addition would meet the required setbacks and height requirements in the general residence district. The subject property is served by town, water, and sewer. The aesthetics of the new addition would be consistent with the existing structure and the surrounding homes in the neighborhood. The board finds that the proposed two-story addition to the existing structure at 261 Elm Street is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, and would be, and would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. Findings. Uh, before we vote on this, because I want to go through the conditions, just so we can, and we, that's why I wanted the hearing to, to remain open, because, you know, I, this condition that we need to look at and see if you agree. Uh, so with the conditions, we have the, the standard conditions that any, that you need to secure all the necessary permits and approval from all applicable boards and agencies prior to the issuance of a building permit. All restrictions and conditions imposed from any prior variances issued for this property shall remain in force and effect and must be adhered to by all owners. I'm not sure of any, but this is a standard condition that we add. We have a new condition, and I thought, uh, you need to look at this, because this is a special permit, and you can do whatever you want with the conditions. I mean, not whatever, that's why it's a special-- That's why it's a special permit. There should be no other enlargement of the existing structures or new additions or addition of new structures allowed on the property, other than the two-story, 600-square-foot addition allowed by this special permit to the 261 Elm Street structure.
I disagree with that. The owner of this parcel is potentially at some point looking to maybe do an addition to his house. And to limit that by doing a restriction on this, because that says existing structures, plural, could potentially limit him to be able to alter his house, which would be a case that would come in front of you again. So I would disagree with that. Not to this building we're talking about?
260, you're talking about 263.
Correct. I'm talking, yeah, yeah, the larger home in the front of the parcel.
And would the addition would require a relief on setback or...
Well, let's look at it in the eyes of the building commissioner. He denied this because there's two single-family houses on one parcel, which is in violation of the zoning. So he could hypothetically, whether it's him or another commissioner, interpret it that his existing house is nonconforming, which could require us to come in front of you again. But even if it didn't, that restriction that you just read states that he cannot do any addition to any other structures on the parcel. So it could limit that. I would understand if you said, and then it could even limit if he wanted to put a shed in his backyard, you know? Is one thing if you wanted to limit it to not allowing an accessory dwelling unit?
Shed, you don't need, that's not a structure.
Well, if it's...
Shed, it's not, yeah. Look, I mean, my concern is, I don't want another unit on this lot. You know, I mean, you know, this is not gonna happen, you know? I mean, or we can revise it, say, any modification to the existing structures on the lot would require the, to come back to this board, which...
I think they would have to anyway.
Yeah.
And I don't think we can limit that, because what this gentleman, what he's saying is, if the big house, if they want to put in addition, he's got the same problem.
I'm saying maybe, from what I understand.
With language or without it.
Yeah, I'm saying from...
Two houses on the same law, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if he meets, if he meets the setback on that house, yeah.
Which is why I wouldn't want to put in a restriction that could end up being interpreted by the wrong person someday. You know, you don't want to restrict something that could be read wrong.
No, I hear you, but I don't see where that does. I'm not sure, but...
Yeah.
But how about we put, there'll be no additional dwellings?
I don't have any problem with that. I don't think he could get additional dwelling there anywhere.
Yeah, that's funny. I mean, I'm not sure we could put that kind of a restriction on it anyway.
I think you can want, it's a special permit.
Yeah, okay.
But because this would satisfy, because this is the intention of the zoning bylaws to have another ADU, because the state ADU is still kind of vague, and they're not sure what, you know? Because the building inspector said this unit does not meet the requirement of an ADU. So technically, I mean, I don't know. They can come back and say, I would like to put a unit that would meet the ADU of the state, but it's 900 square feet.
That would require them to come back.
That creates three units on the same parcel. I thought the ADU said, if you had, if you had an existing dwelling, you could create another. Doesn't say you can create, you can create...
More than one.
More than one.
If there's any zoning violations that would occur with a future expansion, addition, whatever it may be, it would have to come in front of your board again.
No, I understand.
So to potentially restrict something prior to even having the opportunity to review it, I would, I would say that that's not the best of all ideas. Now, if the violation read, you know, cannot make any other further expansions to this building without, without coming to the zoning board of appeals again, especially because you're voting to allow for it to be expanded, you know, then...
Now, the two together, I mean, you already have...
Mr. Chair, the more I read that, I don't really think we need the condition number three, because it seems to me that it would, down the road, I agree that down the road, if somebody wants to do something, they're gonna have to go before the building department, get a building permit. And if he rejects it based on the fact that it's gonna be a third unit, it's gonna come before you.
Right, on the third, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't...
May I ask, is that a standard thing that was not, that's now kind of written into recommended conditions, or is that specific to this project? I'm just curious.
This is to this project?
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, this is the first case we've had for this.
Yeah.
And this is my concern all along, like...
Yeah, I was just curious.
You know, we don't know where this is going with the, with the ADU. This is still new. Everybody's struggling with it. I went to a meeting with the, with town council and people, and they don't know how to handle it yet, you know? So there might be lawsuits and all that. So we, you know, we just don't... I think it's fair enough that we have 2,750 square feet of almost 3,000 and another 1,600 a unit. I mean, I don't know, on a half an acre lot, that half of the lot is in the, in the flood zone, you know? So I don't know what you want.
Let's say hypothetically, all of Robert Mahawald's bedrooms in his existing home are upstairs, and he ages and has nowhere to go, and now he needs to put a bathroom on his first floor. And we write in a restriction that now states that he can't put any additions on his house. And now it limits his home.
You're talking about the existing house?
Correct, because that's what that restriction reads.
You can modify the interior of the existing house to give you an accessible bedroom without, a bathroom or a bedroom without enlarging the bedroom.
Right, but what I'm saying...
You have 2,000 square feet on the first floor.
But what I'm saying is to restrict a parcel prior to you even being able to see a potential plan.
I see. I don't want to argue with you on this one, you know, because I think, you know, it's a stretch of what, specifically looking at this property and the flood zone. And I don't, you know, I mean, you're almost in the velocity, you're in the velocity zone, half of the front of the property. The elevation, I looked at the elevation, in which it says, you're, the back is elevation 14, right? I think.
Whatever the plan states.
And the flood is elevation 16, but stopped just before the structure, which, that's FEMA. I'm not arguing on that, you know? But technically, that whole lot is in the flood zone, too.
Which I, which I understand, but I think those are two separate things.
You know, so we have to look at these things. I mean, you know, I looked at these things, and I think you're getting, we're being more than fair on this.
I'm not saying that you're not, sir. I'm just, I'm just asking for a restriction not to be added that could end up imposing something that's not necessary, similar to what Walter was saying.
Yeah, I'm suggesting, I mean, we have a couple of attorneys here, too, and I, you know, it's not like, this is a suggestion, and if you feel like we need to take it out or revise it in a way that we just have to be, we have to put some kind of restriction that we don't want to end up with allowing another 900 square feet on the property. That's all.
I mean, I think we should take it out. I would think that the building inspector, if someone were to come and ask for, put another building on that lot, he would deny it, and that they'd have to come before us.
I...
Any expansion would have to come before us.
Okay.
I think even if they tried to expand the big house, they'd have to come before the board, right? The big house has to be nonconforming, isn't it?
Because now, because the two structures...
Yeah. I really, I don't really think we need it, but maybe, maybe down the road, we might consider some language...
If I may, just my suggestion, if I may, and it doesn't go to the crux of the case, but I think that the board has a couple of options here, right? One is to, if they're not willing to accept the condition, we could just deny the request. We could do that. And I'm not saying that the board should do that, but obviously, that's an option that the board has. And the other option I think the board has is to not have that specific restriction, being the number three that you're proposing. But obviously, if they're coming before us, and you are, you're again sitting on this board, you already have some inclination. I think you've already expressed that you're not all that willing to allow that much more expansion on any other part of the property itself. I'm sensing that. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I think that's already been vocalized. So they have to be at least of the mindset at this point in knowing that we are going to be sensitive, the board is gonna be sensitive, to any future expansion of the nonconformity that exists. I think that's been voiced, and I'm just here sort of as a spectator at this point, but that's sort of what I've been able to extract.
I don't know. I, I, I'm not gonna vote to deny the application. I would just, I would move, if we need a motion, to strike condition number three.
But we don't need a motion. We haven't, we haven't, we haven't closed the public hearing yet, and then we haven't voted on it. But if we've taken this out, we can, if this is, that's why we're discussing the conditions before. But if you're... I mean, I'm not opposed to this, but taking the condition out, but just some kind of, you know, maybe, any modifications will, I mean, it's...
Well, if it's any, if it's any consolation, you can specifically tell the secretary to put in the minutes some of your concerns about this for the future, any future expansions of the property.
So when they come back, in case I'm not here or whatever, they can go through the minutes and figure out why, you know?
Absolutely. They can, they can certainly know what the pulse of the board was back in 2025 on March 5th.
Okay. This way, we don't restrict the owner from doing any improvements on his property if he needs to, you know, so...
Just suggestions.
Yeah.
Who is that guy, anyway, making these suggestions?
I don't know, someone who recused himself.
All right. So we'll strike the three out, then?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, and then the rest is the reference plans. I think, Michelle, you have the updated plans, right? Okay. I guess we need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I need to make a motion, some need, right? Okay, I'll make a motion to...
I'm moved that we closed the public hearing.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, the public portion of the hearing is closed. Do we have a motion?
I move on case ZSP 24-22 to approve the special permit and the findings that are submitted and read into the record.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
I'm glad you brought your brother in today, too, to help you out.
It's not my brother. That's a compliment.
Okay.
Any suggestions?
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
It's right in the business.
There's no other business.
Okay. Other business, I moved that we adjourned.
Do you have other business? No, this is it.
I moved...
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.